We're gonna call this meeting to order on August nineteenth, two thousand and five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Palmer.
Here.
Council President Beachhead.
Here.
Counselor Joe Bergeron. Counselor Sandra Bergeron.
Here.
Counselor Jerry Frazier.
Yeah.
Counselor Rick Martin. Absent. Counselor Sherry Stancliff. Absent. We have a quorum.
Are those excused?
No, they're absent. They're not excused.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Lily, is there any agenda adjustments?
Not at this time.
Announcement, award, or proclamation?
I was gonna do it under city manager report, but I would like to announce that today I was notified that City of Gold Hill made it through the screening process and was recommended for award of the Oregon Park Recreation Department grant for the Parks Master Plan Update. And so it's a thirty-five thousand dollar project, twenty-eight thousand would be awarded for the grant. The other portion would be our match that we're required to give. And it goes next to the Parks Commission for their approval and presumed approval in September. So that's really good news. I will report that Rogue Valley Council of Government grant writer helped us with that grant. So there's a couple grants I've been working with them as we're at capacity right now. And so successful on this one so far, so excited about that. So that's a award announcement to provide today.
The next on the agenda is public comment.
And we have Charles Johnson.
Right now in the middle of the website.
Okay.
Okay.
And I wanna repeat a few things.
Would you pull that mic up to your face for us and so we can hear you and then just say your name and your...
Charles Johnson, address is four oh one four Seventh Avenue in Gold Hill. And I've concerned citizen, I'm shocked there's not more people here because of the water bills and I'm sure everybody else is at least drinking and taking a shower once in a while. And I do water my lawn. And I got a water bill this last couple of weeks ago, which I'm gonna come in tomorrow and pay, but I was in shock. Three hundred and thirteen dollars for the water. And I looked over the last four months, the last four months, and I've got less than a quarter acre of lawn to water. But I do water it every day for about thirty minutes. I've done that for years and years and years. And for the last four months, I took the last four months and averaged them out. And that's about two hundred and fifty dollars a month for water, nothing to do with sewer. And so I'm a little bit shocked, lived here since nineteen seventy-five. And I know before we had meters in, things were definitely a lot different, just for everybody's knowledge or history. I'm kind of a history nut. Our water bill used to be, and sewer included, was four dollars and fifty cents a month prior to nineteen seventy-five. And but I just, I'm concerned for the city. I don't know why there aren't more people here, or maybe there have been. But there's a lot of consequences that can happen over three hundred dollar water bills for people that are residents here, whether they're a resident, as a renter, or they're a property owner. But things can get dramatic real quick, including property values. People are gonna get wind of it. There's what's called seller disclosure statements, which probably most of you are aware of, even including situations that are out of the control of the owners. They have to disclose on the agreement, any negativity going on within the property. And this would definitely be one of them, which in turn would have a negative valuation on the property that potential buyers need to know about. I don't know if I'm telling you anything you didn't already know. If I am, just say I'm getting boring and sit down. But I'm just right now concerned. I love this town, it's got a wonderful history behind it. I just don't understand personally, and I'm not in any way, shape, or form pointing finger at any of you. But first off, we need some grants, and it sounds like Lily is just going to town on that to help us out. And I do appreciate that. I didn't say that enough to you before, but it's important to make the grants work. I'm just concerned going forward that we have a situation where maybe, for whatever reason, the expenses involved in city water and city sewer in the town of Gold Hill, we're not a wealthy community. And we're dependent on keeping prices low, and it doesn't sound like that's gonna end up happening. And again, no fault of yours, most of you people haven't been here in your position, I don't think, more than five years. Am I right? Five years at the most. This has been going on for thirty, forty, fifty years. And it's something that has to be addressed, but I just feel we're a little, my opinion, don't get upset at me, but I'm just feeling that we're a little bit in a hurry to get control of this and see that proverbial light at the end of the tunnel where we're back to normal. But with these kinds of expenses, where there's never gonna be a normal. And my concern is, is maybe it might be an idea to slow things down a little bit because we've been broken for many, many years and we've survived. Now, all of a sudden, we're trying to fix thirty, forty, fifty years of issues, it sounds like in less than a year. And hopefully, we can pull it out with grants. But I'm just saying, and I see you, I better sit down. But I'm just thinking that right now, maybe a little bit more common sense and recognition of what's coming up is gonna have a devastating effect on this town and the valuations of property, and people are gonna be bailing. I don't think if I were a renter, I'd wanna move here with a two hundred dollar, two hundred fifty, three hundred dollar water bill. And anyway, that's what I'm just saying for right now, I'm gonna listen in as best I can and read lips, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Next on the agenda is council considerations. We have a ordinance twenty-five dash zero six. This is the quest for franchise agreement, and this is gonna be our second read.
Correct, we had our first reading at the last meeting, and so tonight it would be a motion to read ordinance twenty-five dash zero six for a second reading by title only?
I'll entertain a motion for a second read.
I'll make a motion for a second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash oh six by title only.
Second.
Any other questions? I have a motion and second.
Counselor Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Sandy?
Yes.
Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Counselor Malia?
Yes.
Motion passes. An ordinance of the City of Gold Hill, ordinance twenty-five dash zero six, an ordinance granting a franchise, franchise to Quest Corporation, DVA Century Link QC on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, Century Link, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system or system in the City of Gold Hill, Oregon City. So then would be a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Five dash oh six.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Counselor Sandy? Yes. Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Counselor Malia?
Yes.
Counselor Joe?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven, park hours by resolution.
Correct, so just a brief update. We're now back, we brought a resolution to rescinding a previous resolution, a previous council used to try to change the park hours. But the park hours was established by ordinance and is in the code. And you can't change an ordinance with a lesser factor. And so the previous resolution I brought to the council rescinded the other resolution that was invalid. So we're back to what the code says, which is that our park is currently closed from ten PM to five AM. And the wording in the code basically gave some specific, the wording that's here and recommended in the ordinance is amending what our current code says to say, no person shall park in a vehicle or loiter in public parks outside of park hours except during special occasions or events authorized by the city. Park hours will be set by council resolution. And so that's mostly the wording of our current one, except the park hour is changing to say it will be established by resolution. I'm not bringing the resolution to you tonight, just that we can establish it by resolutions. So the Parks Advisory Committee is working on a recommendation to the council, and we'll bring that back. So in the meantime, we'll stay with the current hours of ten PM to five AM is closed. The language about loitering and such is currently in the code. That does not mean you can't use the bike path. You can walk through, that's not loitering. But as far as going in and parking and hanging out after that park hours, that's not allowed. So we're gonna make sure that once the hours are set, we'll have appropriate signage, so it's very clear the expectations. But for now, this would authorize that any changes of the hours will be set by resolution so that it's more responsive to the needs of the community. So I know that we can read an ordinance by title only because this has been posted more than seven days before, made available to the council and the public. You can do title only of first and second readings and adoption in one night. But I thought it would be important to actually explain why we're bringing it to you.
But you still want a motion?
We would still, if the council approves, yep, the first motion would be to read ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven for first reading by title only.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance number twenty-five dash oh seven by title only.
Second.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second.
I saw movement.
I just have one question. So when we do the park hours, is there lights on the tennis court or basketball courts?
We're not changing the park hours tonight.
I'm just, or information.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
I did.
But I'll verify and get back to you.
There is a light in the parking lot by the...
In the parking lot, but not in that.
But I, no, I'm thinking the tennis court for bike, but...
No. People park down there and shine their lights on them and shoot hoops after.
That, that's kinda what I was...
Our lights.
There we go.
Yeah. Roll call.
Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Counselor Malia?
Yes.
Counselor Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Sandy?
Yes.
And yes, I'm mixing up the votes every time.
Making sure we're awake.
You've got too much time on your hands.
No. You are.
Okay, so the next up would be a second reading of ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven by title only.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven by title only.
For?
For the second reading.
And I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Counselor Malia?
Yes.
Counselor Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Sandy?
Yes.
Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Motion carries. And so the final one would be a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Counselor Malia?
Yes.
Counselor Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Sandy?
Yes.
Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item six, reports from counselors. I had a mayor's meeting yesterday and failed to get an email that they canceled it. That's all I have to report. So anyway. No other? Okay. City manager reports?
As you will notice, there is a new sign at the entrance of the sports park. This is our old sign that in nineteen eighty-two, the city conducted a project with the schools and nominations for the name of the park. And what rose to the top was Gold Rogue Sports Park, and there's a nice dedication that happened. And there was a sign somewhere in the middle of the way of the park that nobody really ever saw. And it kept getting taken off its posts and thrown on the ground or this and that. So our staff took the sign apart. It was so heavy, eleven-foot board, down to seven-foot boards. I looked into the cost of having a local artist refresh the signs, but it was several hundred dollars. So I took the boards home and went to a friend's wood shop and planed them down myself with my friend for free. And they had time in that process to dry out, and it's amazing how light they are now, that they are not waterlogged. But then our staff routed out the lettering and redid it, and we repainted the lettering. And we, interestingly, there's always been three boards. And the top one said Gold Rogue, the next one said Sports Park, the bottom one was blank. And so our staff kinda figured out the lettering off of the top ones and added established or EST nineteen eighty-two. And routed it out, painted it, and sealed the whole thing with waterproofing and stain. And re- basically installed the sign at the entrance of the park. So now it's where the entrance is, as you're coming down the road, you see where the entrance of the park is, and it looks really nice, you can see the color. They believe it's cedar wood that was used. And so it's neat to be able to refresh a sign that's been there for quite some time and have it utilized. They made a point to add some bark and some rock right there at the entrance to kinda accentuate that process. We're in the process of getting the permits finished for the electricity that's being brought into the park so that we can add a streetlight and for the safety of the gates going in, it's also gonna power the gate. But it's important that you can see when there's a change in traffic. And so with signage and lighting, and hopefully, we'll be able to add some cameras as well for the safety of the park. The vault toilets have been re- refurbished, they have added screen and painted and cleaned and added gutters to keep them safe moving in the future. And those are open, and so our existing bathrooms in the park are on timer, so they automatically lock at a certain time of day. But the vault toilets will obviously stay open, so those are available if there was something outside of the timers of those other restrooms. Met with some folks about trying to move a portion of the dog park, the bigger portion that takes most of the field towards the backstop. By that going in there, it has kept the Little League from being able to use that as a practice field. And matter of fact, if you look at Google Earth, there's kids playing on that field practicing baseball. And the Little League is really interested in having that practice space back. We've talked about the future of our park and the ability of maybe doing concerts in the park or other events and having more of the grass area available altogether. And we've also received concerns of people that because of the grass, it's hard to get over to the dog park if there's any mobility issues or accessibility issues. And so we've been trying to think of a way that would allow us to utilize over, closer to the bike park and entrance there, and also by the restrooms. And so we have a design, we're waiting for the bid back on that portion. And turns out, the group that put this dog park in wanted it in that location in the first place and weren't allowed to do it, and it's pretty pragmatic, it'll meet some accessibility issues for us. And so I'm hoping to get a quote, and then we're gonna see how we can see if we can get some funding partners to help with that cost. But the staff has been working really hard to make sure everything still just looks top-notch, getting sprinklers going here at City Hall. One of the concerns I had is our turkeys like to dig and get to the plastic. Well, plastic kills livelihood in bushes and plants. It's not, it's not an appropriate tool if you want your plants to thrive, including our big cedar out front. And anyhow, so the team has pulled the plastic up out from under the bark and we're restoring the plastic. They've been fixing the irrigation. And you're seeing the impacts of, you know, there's been some times, it's been, it was off for a while. So there was a day that our staff watered one day in the afternoon for a while, just to kinda try to catch up. But it's mostly on timers at night now, and we're still working to get some of that fixed and still some of the leaks. In the last three weeks, I've gotten calls on two of the last three Sundays of some pretty big water leaks that have happened on Sunday mornings. One of them was on private property, but it was flowing down the road. So we had to call out Southern Oregon Water Tech. That one was at Handy Middle School, they got, they got their staff out. We got the water off, they got their staff out to fix the leak on their property on their side of the meter. The other one, though, happened this Sunday in front of Sweet, and it's in our city right of way, it was a water line main. So today, we shut the water down to get in there and get that fixed. And there's some more fixing still to be done, but at least Sweet was able to stay operational and Timber Mountain was able to come out and help us with that project. So we're still waiting to see. We are, I have a company that has come back with a potential fix for the stormwater issue at Sweet as well. And at this point, what we're looking at is shoving a pipe across underneath second, burrowing through. Because the tunnel, the brick tunnel has collapsed and there's debris in there. The hope is we'll be able to get the pipe through. If we can't...
Through the current tunnel or through a different?
The current existing debris field.
Okay.
It was a brick tunnel, now it's rubble.
Pile of bricks.
But if we can get that pipe through, we then vacuum it out, get the debris out, then can connect it to the existing spot where it connects just in front of Sweet. The water that makes it that far that you usually see leveling up through the thing would then be able to continue through the pipe. The next piece is going across diagonally across the street there at Fredenberg and right over in front of Vitus Construction, where we have to construct appropriate storm drain and catch basin. And I know I've reported to you before that they had just knocked a hole in the top of the pipe, that's not an appropriate catch basin. So we will establish the appropriate catch basin, but that pipe is intact to the river, so that would then catch that water that's coming down the hill and move it on down. We have another couple storm drain areas that in the flooding earlier this year, we've had assessment. We're trying to figure out how we can help work along with restoring culverts and getting those fixed. So next big storm event, hopefully, things will work. So as we go in this next couple months, the goal will be cleaning out ditches, re-establishing those flow patterns of our stormwater to get them to the right locations to get on down the hill. So that's kind of some of the big stuff staff's been working on. Of the two job positions we have posted, we did interviews and have selected individuals to make offers to, and so that RV COG HR is handling that next process as we move forward through backgrounds and that process. So hopefully, we'll have our staffing to full soon. We still have two seasonal staff with us through September, and sometime in September, each of them go their ways. And I have to say that having the three seasonal staff was pretty amazing to have the extra hands getting projects done this summer. There was this weekend, apparently, a crash. A car took out a tree and it covered the bike path. We, no fire department responded because we found kitty litter. So there must have been some spill that they just dropped kitty litter for. And so our staff came in and cleaned it up and hauled off the tree and, you know, made sure that the path got opened back up to the public. So it's always dynamic. You can come in with the plan of what you're gonna work on, and there's always things that happen that cause us to get to explore other fun things. So anyhow, that's kinda the big stuff going on right now. We, yeah, we'll bring more to you next month. I do have one thing that I do need to add to the good of the order or in this time, and that is just kind of establishing when our September meeting could be. I had sent an email to the council inquiring about September ninth, but we have two counselors that can't make that night. There are five, there are five Tuesdays in September. And but the first Tuesday is on a holiday, Labor Day. And so the thought was if we can meet on the ninth next week, there's still three more weeks if we needed a second meeting. But with two counselors not able to do the ninth, I haven't heard back from everybody either. I wanna pick a time that is more acceptable to everybody, so wanted to poll the council, would you prefer having a meeting on the sixteenth, doing one meeting in September, right in the middle of the five weeks? But I didn't know if everybody's back by the sixteenth. If not, we could aim for the twenty-third and just put that we're gonna have the meeting that night. But I, I wanted to see from you all what is best so that we can get something scheduled.
If we had it on the sixteenth, we could still have a second meeting on the thirtieth.
We could, or even the twenty-third a week later if we had to, yes.
Sixteenth works for me, and the ninth does not work for me.
I am out until the sixteenth.
Would you be able to be here the sixteenth or you're still out?
I would have to check, see when my flight comes back in.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's late in the afternoon or it's in the morning, so I'll have to check that. If I'm here, I'll show up. But at this point, that's...
Gone, there's always, you can have an excused absence. I, but my preference always is to have the council take part as much as possible for the conversation and such. So I mean, even if we had one on the twenty-third, you can have one on the thirtieth, but then there's one the week after. So what's the preference of the council?
Sixteenth is good for me.
But if his flight's that day?
As long as it's excused, I mean.
I mean, that's, I mean, if you want me here, the twenty-third is gonna be the best for me. I cannot at this point promise the sixteenth, I mean, 'cause I mean, my flight might be scheduled to come in early enough in the day, but you know how flights are, I can't guarantee it, so.
Just have one meeting and have it on the twenty-third?
We could do that.
Everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
All right, so we'll do one meeting for the twenty-third barring any emergencies. Does that sound fair? Okay, I got a nodish from everybody, so. Okay, that's as far as the city manager report. And I know we have a couple more items for the good of the order. Are we okay to keep going, Mayor?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so. I was waiting for permission. First thing on the good of the order was a video that legal authorities asked us to play at the next council meeting. So I just figured I'll play it and we can all...
I wanna watch Lady Gaga.
Oh, sorry.
It is Patty with the three things you need to know this month. First, we're gonna hold a special webinar to wrap up the twenty-twenty-five regular and special legislative sessions. Second, it's time to nominate important city officials for the LOC annual round. And last, we've got information on two special workshops happening this year at the annual conference. The first thing we need to know this month is that on Friday, September eighth at noon, LOC is hosting a virtual webinar to debrief what occurred during the twenty-twenty-five legislative sessions. We'll give you information on what occurred during the regular six-month session as well as what occurred in the special session focused on transportation funding. So mark your calendar, September eighth at noon. The second thing we need to know this month is that applications are now open for the LOC's exceptional service awards. These are awards the LOC bestows upon total elected officials or city staff who have provided enormous contributions to their individual cities, their region, or state at large. If you knew someone who was deserving of these awards, you can just submit your nomination by August twenty-ninth. These will be presented during the annual conference specifically on Friday, October third. So please make sure you get those nominations in. Again, August twenty-ninth is the deadline. The third and final thing we need to know this month is about two special workshops we're going to offer during this year's annual conference. Workshops will happen on Friday, October... Those workshops will happen on Friday, October third, and the cost of each workshop is one hundred and fifty dollars. The first workshop is going to be to take back and how it can help you advance your study framework. The second workshop is on leadership, how you can develop leadership skills and survive as a leader in today's chaotic times. What's important about both of these workshops is that you can register to attend these workshops, meaning you don't have to come for the full conference. So if you have a department head or a chief or somebody who's just interested in these topics in your city and attend the LOC annual conference, please make sure they know about these workshops. It's a great opportunity to gain new skills. That's it. Those are the three things you need to know this month. Thank you so much for everything you do for your cities, for your communities at large, the state of Oregon, and some of the things you do here for us at the League of Oregon Cities.
Well, that's the first update I've ever had them ask to have it at a council meeting. So yeah, why not? We can get creative. Uh I will say that bec- because of that, I uh did not live stream to YouTube because the video played on YouTube. So I, as soon as the meeting's over, I will upload the video to YouTube so that it's available as soon as possible. But I technologically did not know how to do both, uh live streaming to YouTube while you're playing a YouTube video. So. Uh but that brings us back to uh the League of Oregon Cities Fall Conference. And I got to say, how fun to talk about a topic three times. Uh but um we got more information after the last time. So we're still in a situation where we have the scholarships for everybody for the lodging. We had looked at what was on the registration and um and they came back and said, no, there's a whole more schedule than what was listed there. So I uh wanted to show you all the things in the schedule that Patty, who was just in the video, provided. So the the difference is they had a new staff member who only uploaded the things that you pay extra for onto the registration. So normally you'd see the full conference schedule on a registration and just the things you you could check. You could check the things you wanted to do, see what all the classes were and everything else. Um but this time, they only took the things that had an additional cost and put it on the registration form. So uh I wanted to be able to bring this back since there was more information. And at this point, I think there is a lot of things that are helpful that um would be appropriate for attendance beyond just what the paid events are. So um the first day um on Thursday, they do start with uh workshops for mayor, city counselor, or city manager that's in the morning on Thursday. And there is an extra cost to that, and I believe they feed you in that extra cost. And then and then in the afternoon, um some of the other um stuff that's coming up, I think not only the legislative update, but the OGECC, which is the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Required Training. Uh this is something we've been lobbying on and trying to get. Uh we have trainings that special districts has offered, League of Oregon Cities has offered, uh but they aren't accepting those trainings. And so there's an update coming about this that um I think is a an important one to get. And then um I think some people have concerns about sanctuary law. I think we're kind of out of that loop because we don't have a police department. Uh we don't have a court system. We don't really have any impact of funding in this circumstance here, though it might be worth knowing because if the state of Oregon uh is going to be challenging federal push of the current administration and funding to the state is stopped, what's that trickle down to us? Potentially, but not necessarily. I I mean, we're kind of out of it a little bit, but it might be a knowledgeable one. But you can see how in each of the time slots, there are multiple uh categories and and events to happen. So um there's a reception on Monday after they will have a keynote. They'll have a reception and mixer. And then Friday is a full day of classes there as well as some of the traveling ones. Uh the opportunity to um kind of have different counselors attend different workshops. So then we can come back and say, let's have an LOC debriefing. What did you learn in your workshop? What did, and each of us can kind of report back out on the things that we attended. Um and uh I mean, there's certainly um a lot of things going on there. There's also on Friday, the workshops that were the extra cost workshops, the leadership one and the AI one. Uh I will tell you that I personally uh plan on attending the AI one. Uh I've been using AI a lot to try to assist with some different things and and I think there's other ways we can do it and try to reduce. Uh I mean, you always check and verify. You don't just trust it straight out. But there are tools that we can do to try to reduce some of the workload and try to get things done. And um interesting ways of doing that, that's just personal there on that one, on wanting to learn more of how we can help the city. Um and then it goes on through a meeting on Saturday to the annual membership gets done where they report out and they elect the new leadership and such. And that gets done at twelve thirty and then travel back. So we've been back and forth on what to do and the cost to the city. Um you know, and that's, I kind of pushed back and asked. I also asked specifically about why is the guest cost only this? And they said they only come to some of the meals. It's not the classes and the stuff. And so that's why the cost is different between members who can attend all the classes during the day and a guest, which the guest cost was for the uh the evening meal stuff. So um but I think there's a question of uh does the city offer to cover registration since there's scholarships for the lodging? Um does does the council split individually with with things or does the city pay for that? I I don't want to make that call, but as people register, we're getting the invoices and I just kind of need to once again visit this with council. Uh this, I will tell you that it is specifically budgeted for for travel and training. Was increased when we talked about the cost of conferences. Uh but it is still um something that we are trying to be intentional about. Um one, do we have the training that we need? Are we getting the support that we need? But two, are we also being fiscally conservative and and all that other kind of stuff? So this is within budget. But it is also something that um since at the last meeting, we're like, hey, no, everything's an extra cost. We're not doing that. Since I learned that there was a full schedule that's included in the registration cost, I wanted to bring that back.
Um refresh my memory, the scholarships from LOC were to cover lodging, not registration?
Yes.
Is there any way to flip that at all? I'm just saying, because I could, I could stay with family.
Okay.
And then if LOC would flip the uh scholarship to covering the registration, then I would also cover my mileage and meals and it wouldn't cost the city anything.
I can certainly ask. I mean, I I think that um I mean, I I personally, since I want to ha- take that extra workshop, I'd be willing to pay for the cost of the extra workshop. But I think it also would benefit the city. It's, I I don't know what's the appropriate thing. I just want to make sure that I'm, I I have family that lives an hour away. I can try to commute and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. But at the same time, there's there's something to sometimes staying onsite and and the interaction and the uh the talking with other folks and learning. I it was at some of those evening mixers at OCCMA, I met some of the other city managers that led to some information that helped when I got back. And so there is definitely something to, how are you guys dealing with that? And and what did you do about that? And that asking other counselors what their experience has been on things. Um and I'm just going to point out, it is the hundredth year. It's not something that happens every year. It's the only one that will be in Portland. They're going to move back to real cities after this. Um but um anyhow. Uh but yes, Malia, I can ask that for you. I know you've mentioned you have family, so that's something I can do if you'd like. So.
I'm just trying to save some money.
Yep. Anybody else have any thoughts on attendance and all?
I'm not going.
Okay.
Candidates are.
Got it.
Um as far as you're going, Lily, I don't have, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, that extra class. I think that's what you should be going to. So that's what I still, a comment I have. But I won't be going either.
If you say you won't be going?
You won't be going?
I'm undecided.
Okay.
I don't want to vote in Portland. I'm not really excited about going to Portland, being Portland and life overpopulated.
You know, LLC, the LOC has um two or three events a year. So this isn't, like Lily was pointing out, this is their hundredth year anniversary.
Right.
And so um the majority of the League of Oregon Cities is from Portland. They just have uh their their offices and stuff is up there is how I understand it. So that's that's where it's.
Shaking her head, no?
No.
No, they're in Salem.
They're in Salem? Okay. Well, anyway.
Well, partially, they they have a whole.
So they're up north. Okay. Anyway, uh it's not like they're not going to host other events.
No, they're not. But um the classes that are offered each conference are different. Um the most attended one is the Fall Conference. And so the opportunity to interact with other cities and see how things are done and hear what is different at each. Um I would say as a new counselor, I encourage you to go. I think there's something about getting the information, kind of hearing from other places. I I think it's beneficial. Uh when I was a city counselor, I happened to go my first year and my last year. Um interestingly enough. And uh I was brought back as a speaker when I was a legislator uh at the conference. And then um Sherry and I went to the spring one last year and we actually um bunked together and um saved money and and uh um got scholarshipd and stuff like that. So it was kind of, you know, trying to figure out the best route to do that. Uh I would say that if we go, uh we can try to figure out how to carpool to try to save money where we can to if if need be. And um there's, most every day, they cover lunch and breakfast for the most part. And so dinner is really the the meal you kind of have to. But then some of the days, they have receptions. Um I I find it valuable. Um and I think that I am somebody who doesn't travel out. Once I'm at that conference, I'm there for the conference. So I'm interacting at the conference and um and so I don't necessarily see what's going on around me in in Portland necessarily. Uh but I think the I I can't make that call for you guys. I'm just saying that I I found it beneficial. It opened my eyes to other things as a city counselor that I found was beneficial.
What counselors are right now would like to go? Because I promote it. I mean, it it's a good thing.
As 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 I say, as a freshman, I'm I'm still interested.
Yeah.
To learn.
And I and I promote that. You you should. Those workshops are really valuable. And the networking that you develop with other counselors and stuff. Uh so anyway.
I can reach out to Sherry and um Rick to see where they're at as well. If there's folks not going, that was kind of our portion for our city based on our applications. What I can ask is would they convert them to cover registrations to keep our costs as a whole down if anybody's not going? So like his apply to somebody else's registration. I would say that that doesn't count for you two because I already bunked you in the same room to make it work. So uh it doesn't save us for Joe not going, other than registration cost. Um but based on Sherry and Rick, what they do, I mean, that could maybe offset registration. But if they want to go, again, there's something valuable to everybody going and 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 kind of getting that information and such. So I I just didn't want to. We had this conversation in public. If we didn't come back and have it in public, I think that would have been a mistake. So I just wanted to make sure to bring it back for discussion about what does the council approve as far as and recommendations. And I, of course, can try to see what we can do to keep the costs down. So. Alrighty.
Any other comments, statements?
So um if you haven't registered yourself, which you have a link to do that and um if you need help, I can register you for you, but I can't answer the questions of dietary restrictions and concerns like that for meals and because they do take that into consideration and 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 the specifics about the ones to attend. So.
Don't serve me peaches.
No peaches. Yeah. So anyhow, I would recommend you register yourself if you can, but if you have trouble, get ahold of me and I can help. So, oh, one more thing, I'm sorry, uh that I should report back in manager report. A few months ago, I'd reached out to DLCD about um advice on the riparian ordinance, something that is holding us up from being able to uh expand our UGB, annex any other properties. And uh I um had been referred to a riparian specialist at DLCD. I put it back on the back burner with the FEMA stuff going on because the FEMA stuff was very much overreaching and a problem. Uh and I had, I'd been told they were backing off and we've been holding that off. And then we got notification this last week that there's going to be some reports due kind of thing. None of which is impacting us right now uh because of where we are with any development. But I did reach back out to Congressman Benson's office because they had sent us a letter that they had kind of reached out to FEMA. So I'm asking for an update on the FEMA uh situation. And I know many in our community were concerned about the FEMA thing and the riparian ordinance. Um and where things were the past, I've been told that when the council went to go forward, there was no grandfathering people in for what's already kind of developed on their properties. And that's really what people were concerned about. So when I brought that up, it's like, well, we just grandfather people in, that what is 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 and no no loss change kind of thing where you're at. And uh and it was suggested, well, that went really horribly wrong in Shady Cove when they did that. Because you had all these people that had cleared everything out of the riparian area and landscaped and put all this stuff in and had these beautiful landscapes. And then a neighbor went to do it and they turn them in and have enforcement against the neighbor who was just trying to pull out invasive blackberries. And then it was like, wait a second, you already did this, but now you're holding me accountable. That's right. And so there was issues there. So DLCD said they had recommendations for us. I'm setting up some appointment uh next month to meet with DLCD so we can kind of try to see what to bring back to the council. Um there are folks that have wanted to be annexed in for a while and and the county won't allow it until we actually adopt a riparian ordinance. And so um.
And we can't expand the UGB.
Uh correct. It it impacts annexation and expansion of the UGB. And um so anyhow, uh just wanted you to know that I'm setting up appointments to try to start getting more information gathered to bring that back um from both sides, the FEMA side and and DLCD on the riparian stuff. So.
Well.
Not that I have it this time.
I I do have something for the order if I could. Um I, we talked about putting a committee together to do council rules and it kind of kind of filtered down, but we need to.
It fell down from one person, never got really backed. So I'll send that back out.
Yeah, I wish you were going on.
Sorry.
It's all right. It's summer. It's done.
I think so.
Um I did have an interesting email. You can safety along the Parkway. And that's not the only email we had. That some of the citizens were wondering why we don't have ODOT lower the speed limit to like thirty-five, thirty-five miles an hour going to there at forty-five until you get hit the corner and then then slow five.
I mean, coming into town on two thirty-four.
Yeah, on two thirty-four. A lot of speeders on that. People were just and kind of concerned why it's forty-five miles an hour if they were, people are walking.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that would be a great question to bring up when the transportation plan gets done. So one of the things I've been asked is about having an actual crosswalk put in by the entrance of Beach Park. Uh as people park over in the shopping center and cross, you'll see apparent with all these little kids trying to get across there and people are going thirty-five across the bridge. And sadly, we meet the criteria to have that evaluated because we've had a couple fatality crashes there in the last five years that will cause that to be studied. We've asked for that to be included. But that would be something ODOT looks at is what's the crash ratio? What's the other thing? And we have a lot of crashes in the corner and around that area anyhow from people going too fast. Uh I'm going to say that it is also symptomatic of when you don't have as many police out doing patrol. Uh traffic, traffic stops slow people down. And uh Oregon has continually gone towards a place that we have one of the lowest or the highest rather uh per capita of how many state troopers we have versus uh population and just out there doing patrol and nobody wants to get a ticket. But it does cause people to slow down if they think there's a consequence. it does cause people to slow down if they think there's a consequence.
You mean, we have one of the lowest ratios of law enforcement to?
Whatever it is that we have really bad numbers.
Okay.
Whether it's higher. Show is not good. We're we're one of the last in the country, I've been told as far as our ratios go. And but Highway two thirty-four is a state highway. Highway ninety-nine going through town is a state highway. Grandham Sheriff's Office is is also in the area, but if there's, you know, the more we can encourage patrol in the area, the more people slow down if they think there's a consequence. And that was the whole point of traffic stops is to save lives, slow people down, be aware of the the safety rules there and such. So anyhow, I think that I was told that on the TGM grant, there's some finalizations and they're preparing to send it back out to the contractors to see who's interested in going forward. It's been a long enough time since who initially responded. They're going to see if there's more interested parties coming back. We'll have to select a a person and hopefully be moving forward soon.
Any other questions? This meeting is adjourned.